Evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
One second. Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer is absent. Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Jack Sedick?
Here.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Present.
Thank you. Well, tonight's kind of a fun night for us. Every year, the Green Tree Festival Committee comes and makes a presentation to the city council. So I invite them to come forward now.
Step right up. I am the Cardinal Barker, getting ready for Green Tree 64th Annual. Carnival of Traditions. We've got the fortune teller. We've got the ring toss gal. We've got hot dog, popcorn, corn and the cob. I guarantee you, there's going to be meat on the stick. And I'm here to talk about entertainment. Boy, there's a lot of great music coming. This Saturday, the Boogie Child kicks off the Party in the Park. Then next week, the Fabulous Motown Review on Friday night. The Fiddler's Tent plays all day Saturday, all day Sunday. The main stage, as you all probably know, we focus on bands that play and write their own music. So it's kind of unique in that way. Top bands are going to be playing. The Play-Doors on Saturday night and the Mighty Pines Sunday. We hope to get one-
More than one song.
More than one song. We missed last year when it rained out. But here's the boss, Lori. She's going to tell you the rest of the story. Come on, Lori.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gibbons, city council members, Kirkwood citizens. My name is Lori Swan, and I'm honored to be the 2025 Chair of the Green Tree Festival Committee. On behalf of the Green Tree Committee, we're here this evening to invite you and the entire Kirkwood community to the 64th Annual Green Tree Festival. This year's theme, Carnival of Traditions, invites everyone to come together to celebrate the memories, the moments, and the community spirit that makes Green Tree so special. The Green Tree Festival has become one of Kirkwood's most beloved and popular traditions. Whether it's a custom-made leather belt or bracelet, mine is vintage. It's from like 1990-something, from the 1900s. An ice-cold homemade root beer, or an order of Nifler cheese fries. Everyone who attends has their own favorite part of the festival. We want to celebrate all of the traditions that have made Green Tree what it is today. We kick off the festivities this Saturday, September 6th, with a fun-filled morning, including the Rotary Ramble and the Kids Fun Run. There's a doubles pickleball scramble and the Kirkwood Racquetball fundraiser. Then bring your family, your friends, and your lawn chairs over to Party in the Park at 6:00 PM. Enjoy live music from Boogie Child, delicious options from food trucks, and tons of fun for the kids with the Bubble Bus and face painting. The celebration continues the following weekend, starting Friday, September 12th. We kick off opening night at 6:00 PM at the Wine Garden Stage with music from Mike Maddenley. And on Diamond Four, we have the Kids Dog Show and a frisbee contest, perfect for family-friendly entertainment. At 7:00 PM, head over to the Lions Amphitheater for a crowd favorite, the Fabulous Motown Review. Saturday morning starts with Sunrise Yoga in the Park at 8:00 AM in Folk Life. Then throughout Saturday and Sunday, enjoy a full schedule of events for all ages. Food booths, arts and crafts, folk life demonstrations, a vibrant kid's zone, the Wine Garden, and live music all day at both the Fiddler's Tent and the main stage. And of course, don't miss the beloved Kirkwood tradition, the Kirkwood, the Green Tree Parade, which begins at 10:00 AM on Saturday at the Kirkwood High School Dordie Ferry Lot. The new route travels along Peak, heads south on Kirkwood Road, and finishes west on Argon, ending right in the park. We are so excited for this year's festival, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you for your continued support in keeping the treasured tradition alive and thriving.
Thank you. And we have- This is an incredible group of people that put together this committee.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I love it. Thanks, Lori.
Are you doing okay? Are you doing okay? Good. I know, and you're up walking around and-
Right.
You look right up.
That's awesome.
That's what I'm just saying.
All right.
You should be using a cape, not him.
Just wanted to say, okay. Thank you to the committee. As you can see, this is a great group of people that put on this Green Tree Festival. So we're very lucky to have all of you working so hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, at this time, the council recessed to conduct a public hearing regarding establishing property tax rates for the city of Kirkwood. Ms. Graves, do you have anything you wish to enter as exhibits into the record?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Wait a second. Just keep going.
Just keep going.
Okay. Exhibit one is the affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the St. Louis County on August 19th, 2025. Exhibit two, maybe my mic's up?
I'm not sure your mic's on. Hit the, hit and see. Oh, it's on.
Oh, it's on, okay. Exhibit two is the affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the legal ledger on August 19th, 2025.
Chris, could we close those back doors, maybe?
No, we can definitely hear you.
It's her mic.
It's my-
Brett Pauls.
Brett Pauls.
Okay.
Well, that's better.
There we go. An affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed on the Webster Kirkwood Times on August 22nd, 2025. Exhibit four is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haas, who will present this issue to the city council?
That would be-
Mary.
Mary. Thank you. I'm sorry. Right here.
Okay, so this is the hearing for the property taxes. And reassessments are done by St. Louis County every odd year, so 2025 is a reassessment year. So you will see that the assessed valuations have increased. Just so you know, residential assessed value is 19% and commercial is 32% of the appraised value. The process for calculating the proposed property tax rates allow the taxing authorities to capture revenue basically at the same level as the previous year, plus it allows for a CPI index increase. And this year, the CPI index is 2.9%. All proposed property tax rates are calculated and reviewed by the Missouri State Auditor's Office. And I should clarify, these are the proposed rates. They are before Board of Equalization, so they can change between now and the next meeting. So these are preliminary still. The city does levy property taxes for police and fire pension, parks, general government services, and also Kirkwood Special Business District also does levy a commercial property tax. So this year, the proposed residential property tax rate is 40.2 cents per $100 of assessed value. The proposed property tax levy would be approximately $229.14 for a home valued at $300,000. The residential assessments actually increased 19% over last year's. Commercial assessments increased 12% over last year's assessed value. And personal property actually decreased 4% over last year's. The commercial proposed rate is 50.4 cents per $100 of assessed value. And the personal property proposed tax rate is 72 cents per $100 of assessed value. For the Special Business District, commercial assessments increased 11%. And their proposed tax rate is 38.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. These proposed tax rates would result in revenue increase of $509,112, or 8% for the city, and $30,924, or 19% for the Special Business District. And, yes, go ahead. Sure.
The Special Business District, I think you said increased, but I'm looking at the commercial, Special Business District, what, it decreased from overall from 56 million to 50 million? Did you, it decreased?
It decreased 11%.
Did you say increased?
Oh, maybe. Did I say increased?
I don't know, but it did decrease.
Well, I might have misspoke. It did-
What is the overall commercial increase in the city of Kirkwood? What would make the Special Business District commercial?
I do not know the answer to that. They do have district different boundaries than what the city does. And like I said, these are preliminary, so it is possible. I know on, what I've noticed in past years, personal property also decreased. And a lot of times, when they bring those values back after Board of Equalization, those numbers will increase. So it could just be that they will increase by the time next meeting. So, but I don't really have an answer to that. These come right from the county, so.
So the current year assessed valuation is what the county has put forth to you for the residential property.
Correct.
This does not, does it include, my favorite question, the cap of the assessed value of seniors over 62 who get approval? Is that, is that $1.1 bazillion not include an adjustment to the senior cap? Does it?
I don't believe it does. I don't believe it includes that.
So will this, will these rates, and I know we're below the voter-approved rates because we've decreased them as the value has increased due to the Hancock. Will this potentially change once the county processes the real estate valuation for residential?
It could potentially change.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, could it potentially increase what we're about to consider now? Because-
I wouldn't say it would increase. I would think it would, if anything, it would decrease.
If the real estate assessed valuation drops from what it is now, and we're allowed, because if they, and I don't know, everything may be a credit, so I don't know how that's going to impact. But seniors who have applied and approved will pay based on an old assessment. But their new assessment is factored into this number.
Correct. And I think this is, this is what would be frozen, if I understand correctly. After this, from this point on, this would be what would be frozen going forward.
For 2023.
24.
24.
Yeah, last year's, which is 20, the last reassessed year was 2023.
Okay.
So the rates for those who have been approved will be frozen to the 2023 assessed value. Now, our assessments went up, but my assessed value, because I am over that magic age, is my assessed value will stay my 2023 rate.
Okay.
But you have my new rate in here, which is significantly more. So again, I just don't know-
Right.
-how this is going to factor out-
Right.
-into setting these tax rates. It's the new year. The county was very late in, you know, working both-
Right.
-their process, and I know their numbers, you guys don't really know.
Right. And I have asked several times and have not gotten an answer. And been forwarded on and to other people at the county from the collector and have not gotten an answer back yet. So my guess is they don't have an answer yet on that. But if anything, my guess would be the revenue amount that I gave you, that 509,112, that is what it would be without any reductions for that, for the senior, I think.
Yeah.
That's my best guess.
Well, again, I just, and it's only the residential assessed. It's none of the commercial, personal property. All those, you can be fairly confident, other than tweaking. And obviously, the school district has the same, no doubt, challenge as we go into this year. So we will be very interested to see.
Yes.
And I guess the library will have some issue with this as well.
Yes.
Are there any more questions? Okay. David, has anyone completed a card to speak on this proposal?
Mayor and council, there have been no requests for comment on this hearing.
Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill is under new business as item two for tonight, Bill 11089 for first reading consideration. Okay. At this time, the council will recess again to conduct the public hearing regarding establishing the property tax rate for the Kirkwood Municipal Library. Ms. Graves, do you wish to enter exhibits to the record?
I do. The first exhibit, Exhibit One, is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the St. Louis County on August 19th, 2025. Exhibit Two is an affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the legal ledger on August 19th, 2025. Exhibit Three is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on August 22nd, 2025. And Exhibit Four is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Haas, I am assuming that Mary is going to present this to the city council?
Mayor, you assume correctly.
Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. And same thing for the library. The library taxing district boundaries are not the same as city of Kirkwood, which would explain the difference, slight differences between the assessed values and percentages. The residential assessments for the library district increased 19% from last year. The commercial values increased 26%, while personal property decreased 4%. The residential proposed tax rate is 18.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. The commercial proposed tax rate is 24.2 cents per $100 of assessed value. And the personal property proposed tax rate is 35.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. These proposed tax rates would result in a revenue increase of approximately $126,323, or 4.5% for the library. The property tax levy funds both the operations and debt service for the Kirkwood Public Library. And I do know that the library tax rate is composed of, part of the rate is a temporary rate that will drop off when that debt service comes due. And I believe that's in 2032 or 2033, somewhere around that timeframe, so.
We had talked about that last year.
Yes, and I made a note on that.
So that, we still have a few years-
Yes.
-before that drops off.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? David, has anyone completed a card to speak regarding this proposal?
Mayor and council, there are no requests for comment on this public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill is under new business for tonight, item number two, Bill 11090 for the first reading consideration. All right. At this time, the council recessed once again to conduct a public hearing, a request for a B2 mixed-use development plan for 300 North Kirkwood Road. Ms. Graves, do you have anything you wish to enter into the record?
I do. I also have several exhibits for this public hearing. Exhibit One is the affidavit of publication showing that an ad was placed in the St. Louis County on August 15th, 2025. Exhibit Two is an affidavit of publication showing that the ad was placed in the Webster Kirkwood Times on August 15th, 2025. Exhibit Three is a list of property owners who received the notice of public hearing. Exhibit Four is a viewer map showing the list of property owners who received this notice of hearing. And Exhibit Five is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission Subcommittee dated August 6th, 2025. And Exhibit Six is the report of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated August 7th, 2025. And Exhibit Seven is the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, who will present this issue to the city council?
That will be City Planner Two, Amy Lowery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The subject site is located on the northeast corner of Adams Avenue and Kirkwood Road. And this is just a view right after the old Commerce Bank Site building came down. Site photos, but it is vacant lot right now, so those are pictures from that. So originally, the Commerce Bank Site was a property of 2.1 acres, and it was subdivided in October 2020 into two lots. The northern lot is about 0.75 acres, and that was put aside for the new Commerce Bank. And the southern lot, which is the subject of this hearing, is 1.4 acres, or about 62,687 square feet. The applicant's proposing a four-story mixed-use development with 4,829 square feet of commercial development on the first floor along Kirkwood Road and about 81,896 square feet of building, not including the parking structure. So each of the residential floors above the main floor will be about 25,000 square feet. This provides a floor ratio of about 1.3, and up to 2.5 is allowed. That would be up to 156,000 square feet. The proposed parking structure has three points of entry to be here. Sorry about that. Here, here, and here. And there's access from the south, from Adams Avenue, and cross-access from the north through the Commerce Bank Site. The building's less than the 60-foot in height. And the setback from the eastern property line is supposed to be 50% of the proposed building height. So that would be a maximum of 30 feet, but the setback from the east property line is actually about 40 feet. There are 111 parking spaces provided, including five accessible. 13 bike racks are provided. And, as I said before, there's about 4,800 square feet of commercial space. Just to go into a little bit about how we look at where we require commercial space, we have a framework plan that came out of our downtown master plan that is embedded in the zoning code. And the zoning code requires non-residential uses on the first, on the ground floor, but it does have an allowance for parking and similar uses to the rear of an active commercial use. So the city evaluates where active commercial is required on corner properties based on the framework plan. And that does show, this is kind of an excerpt from it, that we do require commercial on Kirkwood Road, but not along the Adams side. And I did also want to point out that the framework plan did show these arrow sections, which are supposed to be mid-block crossings. So there was a suggested commercial or pedestrian passage on this block as well. So as I said before, the parking garage has 111 space, or the parking is 111 spaces, 41 surface spaces, or 41 internal spaces and 70 surface parking spaces. And they are proposing 16 dwelling units on floors two through four. There's a unit mix chart here. That is what's proposed, but that is subject to change as well. So the majority of the units will be one- and two-bedroom units. The applicant did provide some conceptual elevations, but the, as a reminder, the architecture will be reviewed by the Architecture Review Board. But it does show that the highest parapet is less than 60 feet in height. And that's just the other elevations. They did provide a landscape plan that meets our code. We did have one change we needed. There's an inlet, or a tree grate here that the city forester wanted to be at least seven feet in width. And trees are, as part of the code, trees are planted on a tree lawn along North Kirkwood Road. Adams Avenue is in the county, is the county right-of-way, and the county does not allow trees in the right-of-way. So in this case, the trees are planted along the building, and then the sidewalk will actually be in the right-of-way. So the trees along the building do provide some screening for that side of the building. Just a chart of what they're providing. They'll be providing 25 canopy trees, two understory trees, 53 shrubs, 65 grasses plants, and over 350 flowering plants. They did provide a lighting plan with lighting fixtures of 2,700 Kelvin. They're all full cutoff lights. We still do need a little bit more information about the sidewalk here, just the lighting points there, and to ensure that the pedestrian routes are at least two-foot candles average. There was a trip generation manual, I'm sorry, memo that was done with the previous proposed project on this site. And the city engineer had agreed that the conclusions from that memo would still hold as little has been unchanged in this area. So in the AM peak hour, the memo anticipates 42 additional new site trips. And in the PM peak hour, 63 trips. So those are total trips. That would be trips in and out from the complex. And the city did conduct its own study for the proposed road diet for Kirkwood Road, and with the assumption that this project had been built, and that study indicated that the road diet wouldn't have any significant impacts on the traffic in this area. There is a modification requested on the eastern property line. What's required is a type-C buffer, which would be a sound mitigating and site-proof wall or fence, not less than six feet in height. And then there would be a buffer with one deciduous tree every 50 feet, one evergreen tree every 25 feet, and rod shrub every 10 feet. But based on the city's desire to continue the treatment that was approved previously for the Commerce Bank Site to provide pedestrian access through the site, there was a modification requested for a five-foot-wide sidewalk and an eight-foot-high black vinyl-coated chain-link fence on the eastern property line. The applicant is committed to trying to preserve the historic wall there and the fence there. And so if they can do that, they would be doing, keeping the fence here and the limestone wall, and then putting gravel between the wall and the sidewalk. Planning and Zoning Commission conditions of note was to approve that modification to the type-C buffer, to approve the landscape plan with the revision for that tree well that I talked about earlier, and to have the photometric plan be revised so that we know the average illumination on the sidewalk. As a reminder, this is a development plan. Should this be approved, the applicant would have 12 months to come back in through the Planning and Zoning Commission process and city council for a final site plan. So there are 16 conditions that should be looked at for development plan review. And I've got those up there. If you have any questions about those or any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And the applicant is here as well, sorry. them, and the applicant is here as well, sorry.
Does the applicant wish to say anything?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Graves and Mr. Haas. For the record, my name's George Stock. I'm with Stockton Associates Consulting Engineers. I'm here this evening on behalf of TriStar Properties. Joining me this evening is Mr. Matt Siegel. Amy, thank you very much for the presentation, and we're here this evening available to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right. Are there any questions from council?
I have one of Amy. Can you talk to, so is the drive into the units, is it one-way coming off of Adams in that back?
No, it's a two-way drive. It's a 22-foot-wide drive aisle, which connects up with the drive aisle on the Commerce Site as well.
That is going to be a two-way?
Two-way drive.
Okay.
Will there be a one-way exit, like from, when you, that lovely building, the James that we all hate so much? When you come out of that onto Washington, you kind of like turn left or right on that? Is there going to be anything similar?
No, it's a two-way exit, and Adams Avenue is a much busier road than Washington is, and it's able to handle that.
Washington, exit onto Washington?
Yeah, there already is a two-way exit on Washington from the bank.
Mr. Zimmer?
Yes, thank you. Based on the last concept that was proposed for the site, what changes are we aware of from this proposal to the last proposal?
So the last proposal had a little bit more commercial space. I think it was about, let me see, a little bit over 5,000 square feet. It was 5,300 square feet as opposed to about 4,800 now. It also was more a J-shaped building, and there was a swimming pool amenity that was proposed.
And that's not included in the?
That is not included in this proposal.
Other changes?
Those are the major changes. George may be able to remember any others?
No, I think, I think you said them well. The building's just a little bit smaller square footage. It doesn't have that appendage along the north that went back to the east, and this is just purely an L-shaped building.
I have a question, George. This is probably of you. I would have to say that most of the residents of Kirkwood are not fond of the James. What, in your opinion, does this do to become a really significant part of Kirkwood? This is our busiest corner, our most iconic corner in our downtown, Adams and Kirkwood Road. In what way does this match and look like historic Kirkwood?
Well, I think, you know, when we went through the Site Plan Committee meeting and we met on-site, there was a lot of dialogue about the architecture, and being on the site, you were able to look at the James. And I think we heard what we didn't like about the James, or what the constituents, residents of Kirkwood don't like about the James. We've taken that into consideration, and our intent is to modify the architecture, to take away some of those elements, the white that's within there, and go to more of a traditional brick. And the white is stone on this building, but I think what we heard was, our architecture looks nice. I think there was a lot of things that were complimenting it about the ins and outs and the different roofline. I think that was well-received, but I think the palette of colors and materials are what we would be looking at modifying and coming back under our final site plan in front of ARB in order to accomplish what we heard in the Site Plan Committee meeting.
The, again, this is, you know, one of the busiest corner. Adams Avenue is traveled, it's a county road, it's traveled by lots and lots of cars every day, and it's across from a beautiful iconic Presbyterian church, beautiful stone church. And to have a parking garage facing that with no activity, and what, what is the advantage for Kirkwood to have a parking garage right on Adams?
Amy, can we go to the elevations? Well, I don't know that I know that, what's the advantage, you know, to the city of Kirkwood other than that it's a building, it's a four-story building structure, and perhaps we address that issue, because that's part of, I think, the architecture that we talked about in trying to improve that architecture. That would be one of those elements that we would be studying much more in order to improve that elevation along Adams.
What other questions does council have?
Okay. I don't know if this is a question for Amy or for Mr. Stock, but I was wondering, what is the, do you have any plans, or was the likelihood of a possible cross-access agreement with the Commerce Bank people for perhaps after-hours parking or something to accommodate over, parking needs overflow?
I don't, Matt, can you speak to that?
We have. Commerce had a cross-access agreement, Matt Siegel with TriStar Properties. When the previous petitioner came in, who is the current landowner, they closed on the property. They had, because we know Commerce previously owned the site, and as part of their contract with the now-owner, there was indentures and cross-access agreements that were set upon closing on that property. So they're already set, those indentures. We've modified them a little bit, but not, and they're pretty much approvable draft form, actually, from Commerce right now, but nothing changed as far as the cross-access. That all is already set in stone with Commerce, and it exists. Parking-wise, we, we feel comfortable with our parking counts. You know, I guess it's prohibited to have, for us to park after-hours over there. I don't see a need for it, but if, you know, if there's, all I can say is, after-hours, banks do close at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. But there's no, there's no formal arrangement where we are, we have guests that are allowed to park there in a formal capacity.
Or visitors. Well, I just noticed that in the notes, because of the parking, how you've taken advantage of the calculation and the excess that you have, you're almost limited from putting a restaurant in there because of the need for a lot more parking. So I don't know if having parking cross-access with the Commerce Site would help alleviate some of that problem, if you should choose to go with a restaurant or some sort of, you know, eatery?
I think we would have to come back before you. So we were not contemplating a restaurant in this facility, and so when you asked the question, I thought the question was about parking, because the cross-access easement does exist, as Matt indicated, between?
As far as the drive aisle?
The drive aisle. That's executed, that's there. There is not a formal agreement on the parking.
On parking.
And we have 21 spaces for the commercial spaces. So there's basically 90 for the 60 units, one and a half, and we were not looking for that type of an intense commercial use requiring more parking than the 21.
However, it does happen, I mean, the Alpine Shop has been?
Oh, I know.
I'm not very happy with visitors at the James because they've been taking advantage of their lot there, so just sort of trying to anticipate a possible situation and maybe head that off at the pass.
I do understand this, some of the parking came up at the planning and zoning level, and I haven't seen it yet, but the road diet plans, my understanding is there will be parking spaces put on North Kirkwood across the front of our site that doesn't exist today.
Yeah.
I haven't seen those drawings. They're not finished. Is that an accurate statement? That's my understanding. So there will be additional on-street parking that doesn't exist today to support the commercial space.
And I understand, you know, the request for a modification of the fence.
That's really, was driven more, that started on the previous proposal.
Right.
The residents of the condominium and what their desire was, we were neutral on it. Some of the people that lived in the residence have changed, but those that did attend the P&amp;Z that still remain, they are very supportive of the modification to retain that fence and take away that masonry wall and bring back the stone wall that's just hidden behind it.
I think because of the Pittman School, I mean, that's one thing that kind of helps tie and help us remember, you know, what was originally on that site. And I personally am not a huge fan of chain-link fences, but I think because of that historic and the fact that it's black vinyl, and as long as they're okay with not the sound mitigation that would have come with putting in a, you know, more of a wall or some kind of, some kind of sound mitigating, mitigating wall that I'm, I would, I don't have a problem with approving the change in the fence. So as far as stormwater BMPs, I mean, I'm not sure.
There'll be, there'll be proprietary systems, so porous pavement and portions of the parking, in the parking stalls, not the drive aisles. And then there's also some proprietary, what we call downstream defenders for the purpose of water quality. That'll be subterranean that the pipe system will connect into.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mayor.
I just wanted to ask about the retail space. So one of the things we're trying to do is extend downtown Kirkwood, but yet there's going to be a club on the corner, again, the most active corner, and the club will be, consist of what?
Matt, can you speak to that?
The club for, our clubhouse will be a fitness center, amenity, like gathering space if people can host bridal showers, baby showers, birthday parties, things of that nature. And it'll be attached to our management and leasing center, and be basically gathering space. The patio, as we discussed out in the field, with the P&amp;Z in our field visit, we talked about, the patio will be on the hard corner, will be an attractive space where our residents, our residents or others that are walking by can stop, sit down, talk to a neighbor, have a glass of wine if they so choose, be highly landscaped and be really attractive. I, and will benefit the overall corner and be blend in with what's surrounding on all the other uses as far as landscaping, and will be probably, I would call seasonal plantings done, just to make it look really upscale.
The clubhouse will be available for all residents of Kirkwood or all citizens or?
People can get a membership if they would like to work out there or anything like that. They're more than happy to.
And the other, when we met, you said all the other retail space will probably be services only?
Yeah, more services, boutiques, type shopping. I don't see it being, you know, we talked about, it's not going to be restaurant space. We candidly don't really want it to be a restaurant space with, mixed-use sites are nice, but sometimes they can be challenging when you have residents and restaurants and things that you've discussed, the challenges that you're dealing with up the street. So we're trying to mitigate those. And, yeah, like, could be nail salons, beauty center. We're, can't be a financial services because we have an agreement within those indentures with Commerce Bank. Could see it being a law firm, you know, professional services, things of that nature, clothing boutiques, you know, things that you see on Main and Main, mom-and-pop type shops.
We like the sales tax revenue, so.
Understood.
Other questions, I think, Mr. Reinecker?
Did you say that you're going to go back and revise the exterior?
Yeah, I think there was a lot of commentary through the P&amp;Z about, we learned a lot about what's not liked on the James.
So this isn't the final, then?
No.
Okay. Then the other question I have, the first level on the Adams Street?
Yes.
That's the parking garage?
Yeah.
Are those openings so that you'll be able to see cars in there, or is that just, what's the lighter gray or the darker gray?
It's openings with a screen, an opaque screen on the, on those, but it's not a parking garage, per se. It, they're, they're parked on the surface. It just so happens there's a building above it, so for that reason, it's structured, but those are openings, and they would be screened.
As you drive down to Adams, you'll see automobiles in there?
You would be able to.
You would be able to.
You would be able to.
To clarify that.
Yes, Mr. McLean?
I have just a couple. I was sitting here looking at this, and I said, I don't like this concept at all, the visual of it. And I said, so I started thinking, what, what do I like, or what would I like? Constructive criticism here. I'm thinking, okay, that Plaza Station, that's, that's kind of more historical Kirkwood. Something along those lines, something along Adams, maybe stairs leading up to a second-floor balcony or second-floor apartments up there. Something that's a little more visually appealing and more, more Kirkwood-ish.
Fine.
Yeah, and this, because something like this, just, this reminds me of driving out to Chesterfield or anywhere, any other new community. It doesn't sit well with me, that concept.
Can I ask you a follow-up, just to try to engage and get some, because I'm going to take this feedback and go right to our architect, we're obviously on YouTube, so I can. So you like, so I, you know, this is first pass, but we can go with more, we have a great architect, we can go with more historic, you know, I can tell him to pull some architectural features that complement the church, kind of, some of that. You just touched on the concept that I've been playing around with, and we've talked, and we've talked about, in Clayton off of the apartment of Beamiston that just opened, they have these about half dozen units doing exactly what you talked about with a, you have indirect entry from Adams that would go into your unit, no living space, rooms or bedrooms on that floor. It lives more like a townhouse, but it's like a two-story, you see them in New York, you see, it's a little more urban, where you go in, and then you maybe have your town, it's a townhouse, but integrated into the apartment complex, where the idea is, is you have direct access entry, kind of what you're talking about, where you wouldn't just have a garage, you'd have, the garage would be there, but you would break it up with four or five direct-entry units that can be pretty special. Is that what you're talking about?
That's what, that's what I'm kind of thinking about in my head.
And it could soften it because you would have a residential, now, you know, when you get your code, so we always try to draw to the code. Try to draw to the code, but then, you know, it's your job as council, if you want us to do something special outside of that, and that's your purview. But if, I'm just trying to get the dialogue, just to see.
Yeah, because my thought was like roundstones, where you actually have outdoor steps that go up to.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's hard, but give-take, there could be that direct access for a half-dozen special units that are going to be very attractive and would be two-story in nature, and we can definitely soften it up so you don't have that heavy, direct, you'd still have the garage, but the garage would be broken up by those units that, you lose spaces on the backside of those, where the parking garage is, because that you would, that walk-in would go, if you can imagine, into those units, but then you go up, I think it's pretty, I saw it in Clayton, and it was, it has some wow factor and breaks the architecture up.
I'd love to see wow factors.
All of Kirkwood would like to see wow factors.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, good points. The last time that you all were here with the last proposal?
Wasn't here.
Yeah, no.
I said at the time specifically, this is a very important corner in the city of Kirkwood. There need to be architectural features that I don't see here that reflect Kirkwood, such as the roofline in our train station, the church across the street. That's the kind of ideas that you should be pulling from when designing what this architecturally looks like, so it reflects Kirkwood.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're not there. You know, we got through the P&amp;Z, we heard those comments, we're trying to figure out when to introduce that, and our thought was between the, I call this the preliminary of the development plan and the final plan on the architecture. So this is all very good feedback and dialogue, and quite frankly, he's been talking about this for about two weeks, leading up to here on a little different architecture, specifically on Adams.
I think we want something that we'll be proud of when we see it.
Of course.
When we see it, it's going to excite people and not incite complaints.
I think the architect's excited about this, but just what you're seeing, it needs to go up a little more.
And I can deliver something along Adams specifically that you've never seen before that will be.
Say that.
I'll deliver something along Adams, like the mayor alluded to in her initial comments, that will, you've never seen before, that will have wow factor the next time you see it.
Good.
All three, or all four sides, wow us.
I mean, the front Kirkwood Road is going to, is commercials, commercial, but I think along Adams, we can bring in that with flexibility, we can bring in something that's never been done and really give you diverse housing stock that's not not around right now.
You know what, let me say something. On the Kirkwood Road side, because it's going to be commercial, there aren't there aren't any green spaces on any part of Kirkwood Road. Businesses go right up to the street and you're going to put trees along there. I wonder, should there be trees there or should they be come out? If it's going to match downtown Kirkwood, it doesn't have trees.
It's a good point, yeah.
Oh, we have trees in downtown Kirkwood.
Not not a big green space, a lawn.
Yeah.
Or trees.
Yeah, just trees.
Just trees though.
Yeah.
In the sidewalks.
It kind of gets back to the, what's that sidewalk going to be used for? We have Plaza Station, which I refer to again, which is a great greeting area, we have bands and stuff down there. This sidewalk won't be as big, but then you could cross Washington over to the James, and that's supposed to be like a public sidewalk area, but I'm not sure if that would ever get used either, and I'm not sure if this really would, but what's the point of having trees there? But what are we trying, as a city, what are we trying to do for this area? Is this beautification, maybe it's trees? If it's more of a meeting area for people like the Plaza Station, maybe we should think of something else? I'm just throwing that out. Again, I'm just throwing ideas out.
I think we're open. I mean, we like the greens, we like the trees for shade perspectives, walking along the sidewalk. The front of along North Kirkwood is not all concrete, so we've also got the landscape beds up against the building as well. So we've broken up between concrete and green space.
How much, how much spaces are between, say Kirkwood Road and then the along Kirkwood Road?
Well, George is looking that up, but just to give some context too. So the streetscape that's proposed here is the same streetscape that Commerce just installed. So that tree lawn is what's there on the brand-new development to the north of this and was was, you know, conceived for this site to the south where it has the tree lawn in front. The James is a little different where the trees are in the same spot, but they have intervening the basically tree wells that take up the street trees or allow for the street trees instead of the consistent tree lawn. But on this block, what's to the north that was just built matches what they're showing. So just so you're aware for consistency's sake, and the street trees, while, you know, the maybe central four blocks of Kirkwood Road don't have street trees currently, are the vision and the code requires frontage trees. So, you know, the direction that's in our code is to provide the tree-lined streets, and that's why they're doing it. I don't know if George has that dimension.
I do.
Okay.
At the southwest corner here from southwest corner, so it's 17 feet from the face. Probably these drawings are so small, I can't see the dimensions. Eight feet at the, that corner is eight feet. Eight feet to the right, to the property line, the building's set back eight feet, and there's another eight or 10 feet of sidewalk out to the curb.
And then how about on the north side?
North side, that sidewalk between U and B Bank, that's 10.75 feet. That concrete there in the north-south direction is 10.7.
I should have a little more setback on Adams. I mean, not a whole lot of space to work with, so.
Yeah, that, there's mechanical equipment that's not showing up on this drawing that's in that 10.75 feet, you know, the electric will be there, the transformers and the switch gear not showing on here. I don't think we can slide it.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking of, but I'm not sure what's possible.
Are there any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Yes, Nancy, I just, the width of the sidewalk along Kirkwood Road is 10 feet?
Along Kirkwood Road, I mean, it varies anywhere from 16 feet, as I mentioned, I mean, there's 20 feet of concrete at the north corner, there's 16 feet at the south corner, that intervening piece there, it looks like that's about a 10-foot walk, two five-foot sections.
The actual?
Right.
Between the tree lawn and the landscape bed?
This is concrete right there. This is 20 feet of concrete that between the landscape.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
One final comment, I do appreciate the comment that mixed-use sites are challenging to have restaurants. So again, as the mixed-use developments are popping up, there are challenges in that commercial space, so I appreciate you, you know, bringing that up.
Nothing else?
Nothing else. I appreciate, Matt, I really appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at this and re maybe possibly submit something new to. At this time, let's hear from some citizens. David, has anyone completed a card wishing to speak on this proposal?
Mayor and council, there are requests for comment this evening on this public hearing. As I call individuals up here, there were a couple of comment cards that may be for a item that's somewhere else on the agenda, but I want to call those individuals up if, because they appear they could be for this public hearing. If they are not, please just let me know and I'll put you in the public hearing comments or the comments for just general public comments. The first individual is Fonda Von Troy Richards.
I put it in writing.
Okay.
I'm not going to sit in the back and let the steam roll off my head. I think you're going to hear, you guys are really good tonight. You asked the right questions, all the questions I have here. I'm going to save the best line for somebody else who's going to tell you what she thinks of that building, but I was concerned, and I'm going to say diddle to all your questions, but the one thing taken consideration, you did a study on the street. Anybody ever been there when the YWCA gets out in the summer for three months? That parking goes around the building. It starts on Kirkwood and it goes down Washington. They line up there. I've been there and I know what congestion is on that street. The other thing I want to, the last thing I want to say is, I do not like this plan as it goes forward. I do not approve of the B two application. One thing that was at the end of their letter, just because planning and zoning approved this, you have to approve it? It's always been kind of the rule of thumb. You guys have a hard job. You have added some, you were given something that you didn't, you weren't here for at the beginning. You don't have to continue approving things that you don't agree with. But one thing they said on their application, and that is, I am going to end with the application, and review does not grant the applicant any special rights, privileges, or immunities, and that all provisions of the Kirkwood Code of Ordinance shall apply. You are our last hope. You are the Kirkwood Code. You are our elected officials. You are the one that decides that this is something that's going to be beautiful for Kirkwood. And what I always hear about Kirkwood is historical Kirkwood. That is nothing compared to historical. And I didn't realize the parking when he showed it, it looks like, I keep thinking of prison bars for the windows for the parking. So if they can come up with a better design, go for it. So thank you.
Thank you. No, we won't clap. Thank you, please no clapping. No, yeah, no, we don't want to have any clapping tonight. Thank you.
Victoria Bader?
My name is Victoria Bader, and I was born and raised in Kirkwood, and I still live in the house that I grew up in. So Kirkwood is very near and dear to my heart. I'm not here tonight to speak against progress. I'm also not here to speak against added density in Kirkwood, because that horse has already left the barn. And by the way, anytime you say you don't like something, people tell you you're against progress, and that is not true. What I am against is ugly progress. To step back, I think I should say that I'm not here as a member of the Kirkwood Historical Society's board, even though I am a board member. I am not speaking on the society's behalf, only my own, but I do want to make clear that those two bodies, the Kirkwood Historical Society and the City Council, have in common. We are only passing through here briefly. We are stewards of our respective agencies, and our job is to protect Kirkwood, its past history, and the Kirkwood to come. Large developments such as the ones proposed will be here long after we are gone, and it is our responsibility to make sure the structure stays true to Kirkwood. Thank you all for your questions tonight, and not some nondescript cookie-cutter commercial architectural building. You can see examples of these buildings, almost total copies, Brentwood, the Evo, on 141 in Big Bend in Manchester, there's one in Maryland Heights, there are several in Columbia, Missouri, and they are scattered across the country. Why would we want to take our city that is unique and different and make it the same as every other town in Missouri like the James? That thing is an eyesore. People live here for a small-town feel. With all the new buildings that we can't do anything about now, we are ruining our aesthetic, changing our town into a cold, faceless, and homogeneous place that is interchangeable and sadly not special. People come to Kirkwood for family, small-town feel, yet we continue to encapsulate our old town and surround it with buildings that are completely at odds with that vibe. And I know that they're talking about retail places underneath here. They can't even rent the rusted chandelier space. And it took them how many years to rent that space that's across from the dentist's office? In my opinion, during the last election, some council members were replaced for pushing their agenda of build, build, build. We see how well that turned out for them. The citizens told you very clearly what we want, and those of you who were elected for what you campaign on, to be much more selective in architectural details, need to turn your attention to this proposed building. Please do not allow these builders to take the same plans that they have used everywhere else in the country and plug it into Kirkwood. It is only a cost-of-saving measure for the builders and the builders alone. As a proud 1977 graduate of Kirkwood High School, go pioneers! It pains me to say that the citizens of Webster are doing a better job preserving their heritage. They successfully fought off a large-scale development while growing, thriving, and staying true to their roots. The battle for Kirkwood has to start here and tonight, and I ask you to join me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Paskey?
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Carrie Paskey, the executive director of the Special Business District of downtown Kirkwood. I'm not here on behalf of our advisory commission, because you know you're voting on eight new members that are going to be installed, so I'm here on behalf of the Special Business District and our vision for downtown Kirkwood, and with discussing this with our, my chair, Mark Disinger. So the two of us just wanted to make a brief comment on our thoughts on this development. We absolutely welcome vibrant development in downtown Kirkwood. That's what we want. We want to see people here, we want to see businesses here, we want to see this community thrive, but we want to see it in the right way and even using the zoning then and code that we have in place. So one of our concerns is, is the questions that you have brought up, Adams Road, and the amount of retail and commercial space that this building does have. I know we addressed the clubhouse. It's my, I guess, I've heard that it is a private clubhouse for the residents of this building. And in B two developments, parking is only allowed behind commercial spaces. And so I just want to make sure that these are commercial spaces, that we're putting all of this parking behind all down Adams Road, because Adams Road is one of our most highest-traveled roads in downtown Kirkwood, and right there at Kirkwood and Adams is a very important corner, as we have said. So we just want to make sure that we have a beautiful facade on the side, not what we see in those pictures where it's just parking and with a clubhouse that may not be used for the public unless you are a member or somebody who lives in the residence. So we just want to make sure that this is vibrant, it stays true to just commercial diversity in downtown Kirkwood and not just become just a maybe a building that is just used for the building tenants, because as is, it looks like without the clubhouse, there's almost 3,000 square foot of retail space and not much more, with 400 linear feet of storefront and parking garages. So just looking at the front of this, just making sure that we have a diverse building that we can all look at. So just wanting you to keep in mind what our Special Business District is about. We want to keep it vibrant, we want to keep it thriving, we like the people coming in, but we just want to make sure that it is good for our future and the Special Business District, and we like those taxes as well. Thank you.
You.
Phil Hutchinson?
I've been here before. I live at 131 East Adams, the condo that will be the neighbor to the folks, and I do appreciate your willingness to look at the design and so forth. And somebody asked the question, what can be do to make this more Kirkwood-y? And I don't think you can get in, get to that answer and have a 50-unit rental place that's four stories high and design it all, you try to design it and be Kirkwood-y. I don't believe that the James is Kirkwood-y. If you want a suggestion on what would be better, that lot calls out for a really, really nice condo unit where you have ownership, not rentals. And if you'll just think, I never can remember whether it's Madison or Monroe that has the three beautiful condos that I think fit into Kirkwood very nicely and are a real addition to Kirkwood, but the biggest problem I've got is the density. I know all of your studies say, no, you know, 200 more residents won't add more cars to the road. And I've heard things about even shutting down the road to make it more narrow. I hope that's gone away. I don't know where that stands. But the problem is the basic concept of what goes on that wonderful lot that I enjoyed the Commerce Bank brick building there a lot before it went away. And I just think a condo building with maybe 12 units, 14, even 20 units could be really neat on that place, and I don't think you can get there. Somebody said earlier, and I would echo it, you don't have to do much traveling, go to Durham, North Carolina, where my family lives, my daughter lives, and there's three or four of those right there. They all look just like what we looked at there. You go down to Clayton, you can go up to 270 in Manchester, and that's what they are. So good luck with making them Kirkwood-y. The basic concept is not Kirkwood-y. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no more requests for comment on this public hearing.
Thank you. Does council have any more questions or comments?
Wait a minute, Liz. Matt, what building is in Clayton where you talked about, the Beamiston Apartments? New one?
It's actually called Beamiston.
Yeah.
So.
The one they're building there.
They just, they're leasing out.
I was just going to look at the front.
Yeah, it's if you, there's, you'll see doors, those are the direct access units. Yeah, it's, if you, there's, you'll see doors. Those are the direct access units.
All right. I think we've heard a lot of, I've done a lot of good feedback here. No further discussion. This public hearing is now closed. A resolution will be placed on the October 2nd, 2025 council meeting agenda for consideration. Hopefully give time for some feedback from you all. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, we're now going to move into public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the City Council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the City Council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the City Council to the Chief Administrative Officer or City Clerk if action is needed.
Great, thank you. I know there's a lot of people here from West Jewell. I know that there's, the pendulum has gone the other way. I think I sent an email to a few of you, letting you know that we are going to have this on our work session agenda for discussion next week, on the 11th, on September 11th. So I just wanted you to be aware that we're fully aware, we're going to discuss it, and before we move forward with comments. Okay, David?
Mayor and council, we do have requests for comments. The first one is Cindy Coombs.
I'm sorry, this really refers back to the design concept. I missed my chance. But my dad, Herb Jones, was mayor of Kirkwood back in the 80s, and our family owns the two iconic buildings across from the train station on Argon, where the Sammy Soap and Great Harvest are located. They were Kirkwood's original post office and fire station. We have worked hard to maintain their historic integrity and aesthetic, which is what Kirkwood is known for and is shown in so many of the promotional materials, bringing new people into Kirkwood. Unfortunately, nearly all of the new commercial buildings going up all look the same and offer none of the Kirkwood vibe that we are so proud of. I urge you all, leaders and developers, to do whatever you can design-wise to require and retain that special, unique Kirkwood vibe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Willenbrook?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and Mr. Hawes. My name is Matthew Willenbrink. I am a 17-year resident of Kirkwood. I wanted to speak about the Parking Sensor Resolution 74, 2025, tonight. I have a little bit of a unique situation and insight into this particular matter. I was the Chief Commercial Officer at Fiber in 2021, and was instrumental in actually getting this system deployed at that timeframe. Good to see you again, Russell. Shortly thereafter, Fiber went through significant changes structurally from our investors. They decided they wanted to shut the company down. We, as the employees, had the opportunity to buy the company from the investors. At that time, I chose not to move forward with the investment and departed Fiber. Since then, I've begun working for a company called Genetek, where as their North American Lead for Parking Operations, we have customers ranging from the White House, the Pentagon, U.S. Capitol, a number of large cities, San Francisco, Chicago, Boston, smaller cities as well, such as, you know, Kirkwood here, and a number of other businesses and private properties that we manage. Every Starbucks, every Target store, every Lowe's store uses our solutions, both for video access control and for parking enforcement. I'm sharing all of this not to try and sell you or dissuade you from using Fiber. I'm just sharing this information to let you know that I have an extensive background and understand parking. I eat, sleep, and breathe parking. It's a matter that's very, you know, very near and dear to all of our hearts. My concern with the solution that's being up for resolution and renewal today is, you know, having sold it in originally, I know what the initial use cases were for it. We had three main use cases. One was to determine real-time occupancy. Another was to use that occupancy data for directed enforcement to help mitigate the people that are overstaying their time limits. And the third was to use the mobile application to provide citizens with real-time parking occupancy data. I also know that the sensors have an expected life expectancy, since they are battery-operated, of seven to 10 years. We're here at five years, and even though I departed Fiber in 2021, I still pay close attention, because it is right in my backyard and something that I am very passionate about.
I just want to remind you that we don't have unlimited time here.
I will have 30 more seconds.
Okay.
I am very aware that the sensors have not functioned fully for the last two years. A vast majority of that system has not been functional for most of that time. My concern is, is that a problem with Fiber not producing and replacing the fiber, the sensors, the way they should have been? Is it from city policy or city administration needs? Right now, I know that, you know, only about 20% of the sensors are functioning, as of when I checked the app, within the last hour. My concern is, I think the city should pause, reevaluate, and not necessarily look at a different product, just reevaluate the sensors, Fiber as a business, and see if the use case warrants a different opportunity or a different solution. Thank you.
Just want to remind everyone that we do have a limit of three minutes on public hearings, which is different than when you're speaking at a public hearing about a proposal from developers or the other public hearings that we heard tonight. Okay, David, go ahead.
Elizabeth Huerman?
Good evening, everyone. I'll be very, very brief. I'm here on behalf of Kirkwood for Everyone, which is an attainable housing citizen advocacy group. We are having a Community Land Trust conversation, open to anybody, the audience also, on September 23rd at 7:00 at the Kirkwood United Methodist Church. It's free. Come in here, a conversation about Community Land Trust. We will have a special speaker, Dr. Molly Metzger, who's the Chair for the Domestic Social and Economic Development at Wash U at the Brown School. She's a recognized expert on local and state, federal housing policies, and how they impact socioeconomic issues. This is for everyone in the room. Your voice matters. We need community leaders, leaders in banking, developing, legal, nonprofit, philanthropy, construction fields. We need lots of ideas. So come and learn about what it's all about. Webster has started one, and it takes a long time. We've been listening to them about how they went about this process. So come and learn more about Community Land Trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Wickenhauser?
Good evening.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for time to comment on this. It is about the West Jewell parking. And I'm Jeff Wickenhauser. My wife and I have 42-year residents on West Jewell, and sent all three of our kids through 13 years of school here. And it never really annoyed me much, the Kaiser part. I don't have to deal with the high school, at the 500 block, but the grade school, parking, morning thing, never really bothered me until parents started stopping on the wrong side of the road to let kids out, right next to the intersection. And so we were all hoping for some relief from that. But the first seven houses that all have single-lane driveways, closest to Guyer Road, are, were unaware that this came through so quickly. And, you know, that wasn't good. But then when I found out I lost my parking spot, and I have to switch out with my wife, that was irritating. But I feel marginalized and insulted that it came to the point where the city is hindering my ability to maintain my house. A couple of calls to the police station said, yes, that tree-cutting service trucks will be ticketed. So now I'm faced, when I want to do any maintenance of my house, either pay the ticket or take an issue with it. So anyway, I was happy to hear that you're reconsidering it.
Thank you.
Eric Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. I just want to echo, Jeff is my direct neighbor. We share a driveway. So I just want to echo and be supportive for all my neighbors on West Jewell that, yeah, we were not aware of anything going on, as far as the parking restrictions that were taking place, as far as meetings and what have you. And just want to come here to show support for the neighbors. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Formas?
Close on the last name. It was good. My handwriting's terrible. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Alex Formas. I live on the 500 block of West Jewell Avenue. And I'm here to talk about Bill 11084. Sent some emails, and I appreciate some of the responses in the recent email this evening, Mayor. Our house is a single-car driveway, like everybody else. We can only handle two cars on our driveway, and that requires us to play what I call musical cars every evening, every time we want to move. There's no additional space in our driveway for any visitors, servicemen, or otherwise to park. This new parking ban is not only a huge inconvenience, but has also now created challenges for my father, my father-in-law, who both had knee surgeries and knee replacements. So in their 70s, they need to now walk, since we don't have parking in our driveway, from Guyer or other streets to our home. So imagine doing that in the rain or in the snow. Not only is that an inconvenience, it's a liability. So for, for, so imagine our house cleaners, our plumbers, electricians, everyone has to park on other streets. And that's an inconvenience for those streets as well. They have to then carry the materials and tools to our home. Despite some of neighbors thinking that these people would be absolved from any infractions, they are wrong. My cleaners have already received a ticket, which I have taken possession of and will pay, potentially. We'll see. But, and put a note on their dash, even explaining that they were our neighbors for our home. And they still received a ticket. Tree companies, air conditioning companies, have all had to move off the street by the police. They have asked them and told them they had to. So imagine how, you know, upset they are that they have to do that. I, myself, have already received a ticket on the street, as others have. The signatures collected by the individual who created this petition were collected in secrecy. And many of the people in the 500 block did not even know there was a petition being submitted. So imagine the frustration when we now find out we can't park on our own street. I believe this was done intentionally, to only receive eight of the 16 signatures from the 500 block. What I don't understand is, the SCIT team and police have both reviewed the request and petition, and both denied the request and did not support it. So, you know, why ask the experts to do those surveys and studies when they're being ignored? And I understand there was an emergency situation, but I also understand, at that time, there was a lawn company that was parked on the other side of the street. Next week, I have roofers coming to replace my roof. They have nowhere to park. There's no, they can't park on my driveway. They can't park anywhere else. So I don't know how roofers are supposed to do their job delivering shingles and put stuff in a trailer. So my choices are to not replace my roof or pay those tickets, when there's plenty of street parking. In my opinion, the ordinance that was put in place was not fully vetted from the others of the 500 block for reasonable street use. And I asked this committee to review, which I appreciate that, Mayor, that you've already stated that, and present a reasonable solution to these concerns and additional residents involved. And I would ask that future proposals or anything that happens on a street, that some type of communication is just sent out to the, to the street, you know, from, we get it from street repairs, all of that, just something similar, so we all know what's happening, and these things aren't done in secrecy and have essentially divided Jewell now.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Jen Barton?
Good evening. My name is Jen Barton, and I am a resident also of the 500 block of West Jewell. I have loved living in Kirkwood for the past 11 years. Like many of my neighbors, I love that my children have been able to walk to their elementary, middle, and high schools. I love that our neighborhood has always been friendly with events like a Halloween parade and potluck and a neighborhood book club. The strength of this community, though, was not reflected in the way the new parking policy came about. Like many of my neighbors, I was not asked to sign the petition or ask my opinion about parking or safety on my street. And I realized that our street is unique, being so close to two schools. I know that neighbors at the other end of the street have some valid concerns, and I don't want to dismiss them just because they're not my problems. But I also know that the schools were here long before any of their neighbors lived on the street. And I would love to find ways to all work together to address these concerns. A neighbor who lives on the 700 block told me that our street just feels a lot different now, and she misses the students that she used to see. You know, it didn't move to the street thinking that it was a gated community. I don't want to leave the community off of our street. Eliminating the parking on West Jewell during school hours, as others have said, have led to a lot of problems, including residents, visitors, and service providers being ticketed. We also are having our roof repaired next week. And when I called the Kirkwood Police asking if there'd be some sort of permit I could get for the roofies to park on the street, they said no. The police officer that I spoke to did say that the department expressed their concerns to the City Council before this parking ban was put into effect, but that they felt, like it felt, it fell on deaf ears. And this is just not a realistic solution for a residential street. And also, the parking ban has then caused the congestion problems of Kaiser and the high schools just to go to other streets. I'm disappointed in the process that has led to this solution. Not all, or it's not even a solution, the situation. Not all neighbors' voices were heard. As I said, fewer than half of the residents of the 500 block signed the petition, and many other neighbors, especially those with connections to Kirkwood schools, as those of us who are employees or have children in the schools, were not asked at all. I'm disappointed that this has moved forward with this extreme measure without hearing from all stakeholders. This decision affects all the residents of our street, as well as many others in our community. We need to work together to come up with a realistic solution. In the meantime, I would love to see the no-parking signs on the 500 and 600 blocks of West Jewell removed until a better plan can be put into place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fonda Van Troy Richards?
I have no authority on Robert's rules. I talked to some of you about this issue. You all know my feelings about the parking sensors. No. But my concern is something else. It's what was proposed. On August 7th, I sat in this room, and I saw what that proposal and how it was written. I heard you read it. I watched it again on YouTube. Well, I then went into the minutes. The minutes reflect what was written for the August 21st meeting. And you can see it. If you look at it, it's the same one that's for tonight. Totally different. The reporter from the Kirkwood-Webster Times quoted what he heard. Hi, Colin, wherever you are. Because that's how he does it. He watches it on YouTube. He printed it in the Kirkwood-Webster Times. I responded to him from the Kirkwood-Webster Times, based on what he said, and that was what was proposed on August 7th. Then, to top it all off, the numbers keep changing. I have a concern here. Why is it, we start out at $102,990 or $590, and somehow, in the Kirkwood-Webster Times, it moves down to, from the vendors, $54,000 something, and then 24 for maintenance? I'm confused, because I want to know that the minutes that we put out there for the public are the actual minutes. Something's not right here. Why did it change? Why are the minutes reflective on August 7th to what is now being written on the agendas for August 21st and September 4th? So, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Richard Schnurr?
Mayor, council, I feel like saying ditto to the West Jewell concerns that have been so eloquently described. We have lived on West Jewell, the 700 block on 700, right at the dividing line for 38 years. Both kids through the school systems. We've had zero problems with the teens. When we needed work on our house, we could park on the street before the teens get there in the morning, and let service people come into our driveway. We cannot do that now. We cannot do that now. I'm in the weird position of owning a house and unable to have gutter work, have, you know, lawn services, tree trimming, all the things that you all enjoy, I can't do, because there's no space and no way to do it. I bought a barbecue from Ace Hardware. It's going to be illegal for them to deliver it next week. You get the point. We ask for help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Tack.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. My husband and I have lived on the 500 block of West Jewell for about 20 years now, and we're just three houses from Guyer. So we're really close to the Wickenhausers and the Johnston's on the other side. We were unaware of the residents of the 500 and 600 block of West Jewell that were organizing and signing a petition earlier in the summer to restrict the parking on the south side of the street, until I came home and saw the painting marks on the tree lawn. I was like, hmm, what's going on? So I asked Mr. Wickenhauser next door. I say, hey, you know what's going on? He said, yeah, across the street, we found out that there's going to be some new parking signs going up. I was informed that this, these new signs were going to be restricting parking Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I quickly pursued my own investigation into how this decision was made, and so quickly, without full resident input and approval, and I believe I sent quickly an email to the mayor and the council, saying, what's going on? I'm just learning about this. Nothing's happening. I, I don't know anything. Nobody has talked to us. Mayor Gibbons and city council members, you were under the assumption that Mr. Johnston, who started the petition related to this issue, had shared his safety concerns and goal to restrict the parking with all the residents at the 500 and 600 block of West Jewell. This assumption is not true. And I believe in a former meeting, Councilwoman Letso, you indicated that as long as this has all been shared with all residents of West Jewell, then you approve it. I was kind of screaming at home, going, no, it wasn't shared with all of us. There is no transparency to the entire residence of West Jewell about these concerns that were brought forth to the city council. Another fact, which we've already talked about, is that the signatures did not capture a majority of the 500 block. In favor, I am in favor of Kaiser parents parking on our street in order to attend school functions, and the freedom of the residents of West Jewell to park on the south side of the street without fear of getting a parking ticket, as you've heard, so much has gone on already. If, in controlling the Kaiser drop-off volume, which I believe has been one of the talked-about concerns with bringing on this new parking restriction, if that volume is something that we feel we need to control, we need to look at in the 20 minutes in the morning, in the 20 minutes in the afternoon, then please leave up the current signs that say, no drop-off, no pickup. I think the Kaiser parents have heard the concerns and are feeling that they're going to respect West Jewell's request, but open back up the parking from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Kaiser parents who might attend a special celebration for their child, for all of our service people, for friends that might come over for a new book club. My husband just retired. Who knows? He might have a daytime poker game. We'd like to have parking on our street reopened. I am not in favor of the resident parking passes. I want to park freely on the street, and I don't want to have to distribute them to people who are visiting. My request, as I've already heard tonight, is that you reopen the discussion and you address our concerns with the south side restriction of parking from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. We will now move into the consent agenda. Do I have a motion in a second? Thank you all for coming.
Motion.
Okay. I am going to ask that we remove an item from the consent agenda, Resolution 812025. We'll place it at the end of our agenda. Okay. Okay. So we will now be voting on the consent agenda with item B removed. All those in favor, aye. I oppose, nay. Okay, the consent agenda with item B removed has passed. Okay, we are going to move into new business, Bill 11088.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Article 2, Downtown Special Business District, Section 6-38, Duties of the Advisory Commission, Subsection E.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to accept Bill 11088 for first reading approval? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this bill?
Mayor, I just want to clarify that what they're basically requesting is that instead of submitting on March 1st, they, they would move their submission to April 1st. Is that true? That's, that's the gist of this whole thing?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
We do have our executive director here, if anybody needs.
Just moved it.
Was there?
Changed his day.
Screw you.
Everybody okay with it?
Yep.
Any more questions, concerns? Okay. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 1108A, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. All right. The bill has passed first reading approval. Bill 11089.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate of taxation to be levied upon all real estate and certain tangible personal property in the city of Kirkwood, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri for the year 2025, for the maintenance of the Kirkwood Public Parks, for the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund, for general government services, and for businesses in the Special Business District.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to accept Bill 11089 for first reading approval?
Go move.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11089, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The bill has passed for just reading approval. Bill 11090.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate of taxation to be levied upon all real estate and certain tangible personal property in the city of Kirkwood, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri for the year 2025, for the operation and maintenance of the Municipal Library District of Kirkwood.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Bill 11090 for first reading approval?
Go move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, it just occurred to me, and after we had already moved on to voting, I, I understand why we had the public hearing and the first reading tonight, but I wonder if maybe we would want to explain why they're concurrent tonight, which they aren't usually.
Right.
Would you like me to cover that?
Russ, or Jackie, or whoever.
Idea, thank you.
Okay.
Or should we have Mary, or whatever?
Russ, we have Mary. Mary's, Mary's sitting out there.
So this is just the first reading.
Mm-hmm.
So the second reading will be at the September 18th meeting, and that'll be after the Board of Equalization. But as far as I understand, you require, it requires two readings since it's an ordinance.
Prior to September.
To pass.
Right.
Prior to September 30th.
Question from Councilmember Letso is, why, public hearing and first reading same evening, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Normally, a public hearing, and then the first reading takes place, I don't know.
Couple weeks later.
At least a couple weeks later. So, this is kind of unusual.
Oh, we did it this way last year, so I'm not sure why, why, I don't know the answer to that then, because this is how we did it last year, so. And that was my first year.
It's been pretty common practice for property tax rates, public hearings and first readings take place on the first, on the same evening. We've done that for, actually, I think, quite a few years.
Right. It's, I. We don't receive the information from the county until late in.
August.
August.
Yeah.
And with.
And then by the time we have the 16 days.
15 days.
That it takes 15 days to publish in the newspaper, it's very limited.
Time constraints because of county.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm aware of that. I'm not sure everybody in the room or listening to us understands why the public hearing.
Yes.
And the first reading. Come on the same.
Particular.
Right.
Issue, yeah.
Right.
We only have two meetings.
Because of the time constraint, that by the time we get it from the information from the county, and then by the time we have to advertise for the public hearing, and then by the time, you know, all of that timeframe.
When state law says it has to be approved by September 30.
Right. And it's even going to be tight for us. I won't receive the information from the county until right around September 15th, which makes it really tight to get the information for the.
And possibly adjusted rates.
Also, so, yeah. And then I have to turn it into them and file everything by the end of September, also. So.
Right.
It's just a very quick timeframe.
Thank you, Mary.
Good idea. Thank you, Councilmember Letso. Good idea. Okay, where were we? Let's see, we've already, any questions? No. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11089, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
090.
I'm sorry, 11090. We already did the 89. Okay, 11090. I'll say aye. I oppose, nay. The bill has passed first reading approval. Okay. Bill 11091.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance vacating 62.5 feet of a 70-foot-wide easement that exists, exists on a tract of land located in part of Lot 9 of Rosewood, as described in Book 3216, page 484, and being recorded in Platt Book 60, page 8, of the St. Louis County records, located in the city of Kirkwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more particularly described on Exhibits A and B, attached here too and incorporated by reference herein.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Bill 11091 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, no questions or comments. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11091, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Bill carries first, uh, bill has passed first reading approval. Resolution 742025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the single-source proposal of Fiber LLC for the provision of Park Kirkwood parking sensors and installation in the amount of $102,590 for an initial term of 12 months, with the option to renew for up to four additional 12-month terms contingent upon budgetary approval and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 742025 as read?
Second.
Thank you. There be any questions or comments?
I have a good comment. I want to thank all the residents that contacted me, either email or text or stopped me on the street with their comments and thoughts on this one, and so my vote tonight's going to be a resounding no.
Councilmember Reinicker.
Yeah, I concur with Mark. I mean, this is nuts. The ones we have don't work. Why would we spend more money buying more of them? Although, no.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes, yeah, and I too, like so many of us, have had a lot of contacts from residents, and they're all pretty consistently thinking it's nuts as well, and I concur with the nuts associated with it.
Any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Zimmer?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I won't say it's nuts, but on paper, it's a good idea, but, you know, the cost, balancing what seems a high cost versus what we would get out of it is what concerns me. You know, is it worth the bang for the buck, spending this much money on something that, you know, we're not really certain of the performance of these and the outcome? So, I will be voting no also.
We have just instituted that we are going to be enforcing our parking code. It hasn't been enforced in a long time in downtown Kirkwood, so we're hoping that's going to free up more parking. We have contracted with parking for employees of the Downtown Special Business District and a new parking location, and hopefully that is going to be freeing up more parking. I think we need to let the things that we've just done have some time before we spend some kind, some money like this. I'm saying.
Um, and, yeah, I, I, I was intrigued by the possibility that this tool would help with enforcement, because that is kind of a challenging job for two part-timers, and council is intent on making sure that people, you know, don't overstay their, their time limits for various reasons. So, but there are, there are issues with this particular tool, so I, I think it, you know, I, I also have too many questions with it. And I talked to Electric Director Mark Petty about it, and he did indicate to me that there are other possible, similar kinds of automated, computerized, whatever, sensor systems that we could possibly look at too. So, I think it's a good idea that we maybe don't approve this.
I just.
Councilmember Jacsetic.
Back to me. I just want to echo, and I concur with you. I am ever so hopeful that enforcement of our parking ordinances in the Downtown Business District will help us really look at the issues and the concerns, and that with additional parking opening up for employees. Let's, let's try this.
Any other? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
No.
Councilmember Reinicker? Councilmember Zimmer? Councilmember Jacsetic?
No.
Councilmember Letso?
No.
Councilmember McLean?
Resolution has failed. Resolution 822025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution adopting a city of Kirkwood grant administration policy.
Do I have a motion and accept, a second to accept Resolution 822025?
Go move.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
I'd kind of question. Russ, this is basically what we're doing now in practice, and we're just now making it an ordinance, is that right?
Yes. It's, it's setting a policy that is transparent and clear as to how we handle money from grants, how we apply for grants, how council is involved in approving grants. It is a codification of what we've been doing, just as you said. Thank you.
Thank you. What else? Any other comments or questions? Oh, Councilmember Letso.
Well, and I would like to commend staff on being so successful on obtaining grants, and we continue to apply, so it, having those grants certainly helps with our budget. And I certainly appreciate our auditor, Sickich LLC, in proposing that we have a formal grant administration policy. I think this is a great idea, and it does help putting, put it in writing, so.
Good idea.
Great idea.
And thank you for bringing that up. And we, we see evidence of it right now on Lindeman and Essex.
Oh, my goodness.
Soon to be Grant's Trail, so.
Yes.
Right, all kind, all over, yeah. So, yes, staff is to be commended. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinicker?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Letso?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
The resolution has passed. Resolution 832025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of America's Parking Remarking in the amount not to exceed of $76,318.55, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $6,938.05 for 2025 High-Billed Acrylic Waterborne Pavement Markings for the Engineering Department, and authorizing the direct, and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 832025 as read?
Motion.
Thank you. Okay, comments or questions from council? Councilmember McLean?
I already have so many questions, Mayor.
No, that, I, that's good.
Oh, Russ, is this, or it says 2025 High-Billed Acrylic Waterborne Pavement Markings. Is that 2025, or is it, is that for the year 2025?
I, I believe it's the year 2025.
Do we have an idea of where these are going, or?
You know, Rick Holsinger is here. Rick, do you want to speak to what we use these pavement markings on, primarily intersections?
Oh.
Take your time.
Take your time.
Yes, in the contract, there's numerous streets and, and that we're going to be restriping or remarking, and it.
or remarking. And it's, it's listed in the contract. I don't have a mental list of all the streets.
Is something we do every year?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I have a question for you, Rick, because last year, they put some, I think it was last year, maybe it was the year before, they put some marks on Ann Avenue, but they didn't blow off the leaves before they did it. And there's, so is there something in the contract that says that they have to make sure the street is clean before these, they put those markings?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
They're responsible for that. It's on the punch list. The contract's still active right now. In fact, I just talked to the contractor, and they'll be back next week to do that.
Right. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Jacsetic.
Councilman Schaefer question. I see we only, we submitted requests for bids and only got one.
Correct.
And that was the only one in, of, I mean, we don't know of any other vendors out there that.
There, there are several vendors. You know, the, the one that is doing our contract from last year chose not to bid this contract. And that tends to happen if they're too busy or overloaded in this, in time of year. And there's not a lot of striping contractors in the area.
Do you all add them into the vendor, or encourage them to get into our procurement list so that we?
Oh, they, they already are.
They are.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Zimmer.
Thank you. This, High Build Acrylic Waterborne Pavement Markings, what is our, what's the success so far with our experience with this? Are they lasting as long as we thought they would?
So far, they are. Also in this contract is, we also do thermoplastic striping of stop bars and crossings, and those, those last longer too. So, and the high build is exactly like it says. It's, it's like twice the thickness of normal paint. So.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Letso?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Oh. Okay, we are now at the point of council, city council.
Oh, Resolution 84?
Oh, oh, gosh, where am I? Oh, Resolution 80-2025.
84.
84-2025, sorry. Russ?
Mayor and council, this is accept, this is a resolution accepting the bid of PLM LLC in the amount not to exceed of $126,619.90, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $11,510.90 for 2025 Concrete Pavement Joint and Crack Sealing Project for the Engineering Department and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 84-2025 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? I, I actually do have one that I'll ask you, Russ, because you brought up, you were, you thought it was very unattractive, what they were doing with tar on our concrete streets.
I thought it was quite unattractive.
Yeah. And is that what this is?
So, well, in, in certain circumstances, they're still going to do that. But in most circum, in the oldest, as I understand it, and you can correct me, Rick, but as I understand it, the oldest roads that really have water intrusion, they're going to treat this with that rather not pretty treatment, just the wider strips of, of tar. But on the newer crack seals, they're going to do a very thin applied application that is unnoticedable or virtually, I won't say unnoticedable, it's virtually unnoticedable. So that was the trade-off to get the benefit from the uglier treatment, so to speak, less attractive treatment. But we do need to preserve those streets because they're not at their functional end of life. So the determination by the Engineering Department was for the streets that are newer, they get the less intrusive treatment. The streets that are older, that are getting closer to end of life, that need the preservation, so we don't, they don't fall apart, get the true crack sealing that has the wider treatment.
At one point, there was a discussion about sand on those that are tar, black, the black ones, is that?
I, I don't believe that that was acted upon. Is that correct, Rick? Yeah, there may have been discussion, but it was not acted upon.
And is that because of cost? Or what?
I don't think it was cost. I think it was efficacy.
Oh.
No, it's for appearance.
Make it look less, so less obvious.
The sand would not have any effect? Okay.
Yeah, I think we determined it was marginal effect and not worth it.
Okay. Any additional questions? No? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Letso?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll move to the consent.
Yep, the consent agenda.
Okay. So, item B from the consent agenda, Resolution 81-2025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Downtown Special Business District Advisory Commission.
Thank you. I am going to recuse myself. There's a member of my family that is, been nominated by the Special Business District, so I will not be voting on this. Council, Deputy Mayor Zimmer will lead that.
Okay. Got it. May I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 81-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
The strong candidate, a list of candidates.
Very strong.
Nice job.
Who's the relative in the family? Just kidding, don't answer that.
She's, she has refused herself.
I don't, I don't want that.
She has refused herself.
She's working hard. She's coming out strong. This is really nice. So, good. It's good.
You have done great jobs before.
Hold their names for later.
Yeah.
Keep them for later. Very good, very good.
Great job.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Letso?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor, back to you.
Okay. Got it.
So tonight, I have news, both happy and sad. We are losing our Assistant City Clerk. Her name, Bridget Waters. She's a delightful person who has worked with our city clerk for.
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. She was a Kirkwood High graduate. Very proud of her. And she is going to become the city clerk in Bridston. So it's a really great move for her. We're going to miss her dearly. She's a delightful individual, but we're just happy that she's landing in such an honorable position. So, okay. Any other council reports? Chief Administrative Officer report?
I have no report at this time, Mayor.
Okay.
City Attorney?
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
City Clerk report?
Yes, Your Honor, I have the report of the September 3rd meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken. Consideration of an application for a major telecommunications facility for the AT&amp;T Building at 115 West Adams Avenue was continued to the September 17th meeting. Consideration of applications for a major site plan for a new parking lot and a special use permit for outdoor storage for Murphy Company at 444 East Elliott Avenue was continued to the September 17th meeting. After a presentation by staff on applications for a major site plan for a new coffee restaurant and a special use permit for a drive-through for Dutch Brothers at 10300 Manchester Road, which is the Green Tree Center, a subcommittee was appointed. The subcommittee will meet on the property side on Tuesday, September 9th at 8:00 a.m. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no further business, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Thursday, September 18th, 2025. This meeting is adjourned.